Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Waverne City Council here, March 12th. At this point in time, we're going to start off. We have a young man with us tonight who is our, taking the place of our youth mayor. We have James Wheeler over here. He is on the youth council. We welcome you and welcome all your comments, James, to here tonight. And raise your hand whenever you wish to make a comment and the floor will recognize you. With that being said, we will proceed. The first order of business, the approval of minutes of regular council meeting being held February 26, 2018, and Strategic Planning and Priorities Committee meeting held February 12, 2018. Do you have a motion, please?
I'll move those minutes, Your Worship.
Second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Called the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Additions to the agenda. First off, we're going to delete number 10, see, the Development Appeal. That will be deleted from the agenda. We're going to add, on section seven, motions, the appointment to have the Development Officer. Is there any, do we have a motion for that?
I'll move that petition.
Petition, Your Worship?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? Was there anything else that you wished to have on the agenda? If not, called the question. All in favor? So carried unanimously. Delegations, proclamations, and petitions? We have the Park Board recognition. Councilor Bailey? If you would, please.
On, I would like to call up here with me two members of our, citizens of our Waverne, Gary Anderson and Ray Hamm, please. This evening, we have a presentation that we'd like to make on behalf of the Waverne Parks Board. And first of all, I would like to thank both Ray Hamm and Gary Anderson for their services over the last number of years. Ray has sat on the board for the last 22 years, and not before behind him, Gary has sat on the board for 21 years. So you can imagine the scope of the involvement these gentlemen had in the parks and board area of our city. The Park Board contributes to the projects such as Tad aqua boardwalk development, the extension of Tad aqua trail system, and the annual events such as the planting of a tree program, Trails Day, and Winter Fest also. Both Gary and Ray have had a tree planted, will have a tree planted, along the Tad aqua Parkway that will be representation to you and honoring you for all the work that you have done. Thank you very, very much for your dedication. These gentlemen are also part of the Rotary Cub, so any function that we ever had, we could always count on the Rotary to assist us in that, and that's happened many, many times over my stay with the, with the Parks Department. So congratulations, and more so, a very huge thank you for your service and dedication to this city. So. Now, I was also told, Ray and Gary, if you want to stay for the rest of the council meeting, Councilor Richards invited you to stay, so.
I would say is, I just want to thank the city for the opportunity of having served on, on the Parks Board for 21 years. So thank you very much. You.
Again, the city is very appreciative of all the time and effort that both have put into the city. We are now, have the standing committees. We have the Police Commission. Councilor Van Betje, if you would give, deliver that report, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. A regular meeting of Waverne Police Commission was held at the boardroom on Tuesday, February 27th at 4:00 PM. The first item on the agenda was the swearing-in of a new citizen-at-large to the Waverne Police Board. Mayor Roy welcomed Barclay Charlton to the Board and read Waverne Board of Police Commission Declaration. Next on the agenda was correspondence, which the Board took as information. And Mayor Roy and Councilor Van Betje stated they were attending the CAPG Conference in Winnipeg in August. Other members are welcome to attend due to the close proximity of the conference. There will be no airfare costs so that more members could attend if they wish. The conference is August 7th to 11th. In reports, the Mayor's Report. Chief Pritchard presented the Mayor's Report for the months of December and January. In comparison to December 2016, the 2017 crimes against persons increased by four, crimes against property increased by 14, and total calls for service increased by 67, and alarm calls decreased by eight. For January 2018 comparing to January 2017, crimes against person decreased by three, crimes against property increased by 28, total calls for service increased by six. Chief Pritchard gave his verbal report. The council payable report for December and January were presented, and Chief Pritchard provided an update on bylaw enforcement. The Chief Pritchard then gave the Waverne New Main Society Report for December and January. Chief Pritchard provided a use of force report for 2017 advising there were 10 incidents where use of force options were required with two policy violations and one of four pursuits identified. Chief Pritchard provided a report on the Rides on Us Initiative. He advised there was funds left over to the end of August, and so have carried over approximately $6,000 to $7,000 into 2018 and hope to run this again next year, or this, this year. Chief Pritchard provided a financial update on the 60th anniversary Police Gala held in, in the city in August 2017. He advised he is working with Estevan to alternate hosting this event each year with Estevan possibly hosting in 2018. Under new business, Chief Pritchard provided a report on partnership with the Public School Division that would replace the day air program. Councilor Van Betje stated that, that Waverne has been allowed to retail cannabis outlets, and the city manager will be providing an informational report to council at the March 12th council meeting. Mayor Roy advised the fire chief presented an updated fireworks bylaw at the February Operations Committee meeting, and council member provided input, and the fire chief will make some changes and bring back to the committee. The meeting was adjourned, and with no date set for the next meeting.
Any questions from council? At such time, then we'll accept the report and have it filed. There's no consent in agenda. We have now two motions in the motions portion of the agenda. The first one is appointment of acting city manager. Here.
Your Worship, I'm very pleased to make this motion that Matthew Warren be in hereby appointed as acting city manager for the city of Waverne as per section 84 of the Cities Act, and with duties and responsibilities as defined in the City Administration Bylaw 2003-2093.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it, Your Worship.
Any discussion? At this point in time, is, is we'll call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. We welcome you, and we have full confidence you'll do a good job at this, and we appreciate you stepping in here at this point in time. The next one, council payable. Motion, please.
Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion that the purchase of the amount of $2,611,763 and 13 cents from February 23rd to March 8th, 2018 be passed for payment.
I'll second that, Your Worship. Called the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Then, number C is appoint our Development Officer. If you could give some background, please.
Yes, Your Worship. Basically, the Planning and Development Act 2007 states that you must have a Development Officer. And so, and in the past, the city manager has always been the Development Officer. Therefore, I would recommend that we appoint our acting city manager as our Development Officer.
Your Worship, I'll make a motion that the acting city manager be appointed as the Development Officer for the city of Waverne as per section 13 of the Planning and Development Act 2007. I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion? This is, just a point of clarification. This is the Development Officer in which they are doing the day-to-day routine development as opposed to the, what is it referred to as, the other development part?
It's outlined. It's outlined in the zoning bylaw, and just, just day-to-day activity, signing development permit applications and dealing with home occupations and that sort of thing is basically what the Development Officer will do. So it's just the day-to-day.
As opposed to the other, the.
As a planner, yeah. No, this wouldn't be the same responsibility as a planner, though. No, Your Worship.
And the city planners would do the overall, general plan?
Yes.
Which is required by the government.
Which would be a requirement of the province for official city plans and such things like that.
Without clarification? Called the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. We're going to introduce a couple bylaws. The extend the assessment role deadline. Laura Missal will do this.
This is just to extend the date from April 1st to May 31st, because we don't get the assessments from SAMA by April 1st, so every year we have to extend it.
Motion?
Thanks, Your Worship. I'd make a motion that bylaw 2018-3374, a bylaw to extend the assessment role from April 1st to May 31st, 2018, be read a first time.
Second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
The one question I have for you, Laura, is why, if we have to do this every year, why do not, do we not change our bylaw just to accommodate that? Can you ask?
It's in legislation to be April 1st, so we have to change it every, or we have to do a bylaw to extend it every year.
Okay, but it's in, it's in our legislation. Okay. Called the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Second reading?
Your Worship, I make a motion that bylaw 2018-3374, a bylaw to extend the assessment role from April 1st to May 31st, 2018, be read a second time.
Second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Called the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Third reading?
Your Worship, I make a motion that bylaw 2018-3374, a bylaw to extend the assessment role from April 1st to May 31st, 2018, be given three readings at this meeting.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Called the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
And Your Worship, I make a motion that bylaw 2018-3374, a bylaw to extend the assessment role from April 1st to May 31st, 2018, be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
All in favor? Carried unanimously. The second urban forestry bylaw, we have Linda Procott, if you would speak to this, please. She's with Parks.
The Urban Forestry Bylaw is to repeal the existing Urban Forestry Bylaw due to the notable changes in language, content, and changes to, sorry, I'm trying to think of the word, to authority. It's, it's a complete revision of, of the current Urban Forestry Bylaw, and it's, it's in place to sustain an effective urban forestry program for the city.
Very good. Thank you.
Your Worship, with that, I have a motion that the bylaw 2018-3373, the Urban Forestry Bylaw, a bylaw for the preservation of city trees policy representing the urban forestry program be read a first time.
Your Worship, I'll second that motion.
Called the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
Your Worship, I would like to move that the bylaw 2018-3373, the Urban Forestry Bylaw, a bylaw for the preservation of city tree policy respecting the urban forest program be read a second time.
Called the question. Called the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
I would like to move, Your Worship, that the bylaw 2018-3373, the Urban Forestry Bylaw, a bylaw for the preservation of city tree policy respecting the urban forestry program be giving three readings at this meeting.
Second that motion, Your Worship.
Called the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously.
And Your Worship, I'd like to make, move that the bylaw 2018-3373, the Urban Forestry Bylaw, a bylaw for the preservation of city tree policy representing the urban forest program be read a third and passed.
I'll second that motion, Your Worship.
All in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. We now to move to new business, one that is more contentious, or maybe contentious. We have the retail cannabis discussion, and that is a discussion on the number of the province has stated that we can disallow or any cannabis retail here, or allow only one cannabis, or we can take the two that we have the license to be allowed here. It's through the liquor commission, just as in Alcohol and Gaming Commission, that simply is the same way as they have for outlets for off-sale beer and liquor licenses, and that's who's going to be administering it. So with that, I need a resolution so we can open discussion.
Actually, Worship, if you, if you don't mind, I'll just mention that if council chooses to just take this as information and not make a motion to, to deny this, then city of Waverne would be just allocated with two outlets. The only reason that SAS Liquor and Gaming will require a motion is if we do not want the, or do not want to allow the two outlets. So it would, we would only need a motion if we wish to deny those two outlets. And the deadline was February 28th to advise SAS Liquor and Gaming of that. However, I had a very brief discussion with them on Friday, and if Waverne did choose to deny the two outlets, I would advise them first thing tomorrow morning, and hopefully that, that could happen if that's council's wish.
Is anybody who wish to make a motion to deny that, the two?
I'll make a motion to deny it.
And I guess the motion is, do you want to restrict to one or have none?
Mine is none, Your Worship.
Do we have a second?
If you get it on the floor, Your Worship, I'll second the motion.
Just the floor it? With that, called the discussion. There are few people that wish to speak. We'll go, start with the, I think what we'll do is we start with our guests first to speak, and then we can have our council members discuss after we listen. Chief Pritchard, I believe you had any, any comments?
I don't have any real comments in regards to the, the licensing. I mean, as council is really making a decision and going into the dark, because we don't know what the legislation is going to look like. I do anticipate that there'll be distances put on from schools. I believe that there's going to be some restrictions on advertising. There's going to be some safety mechanisms around there. I do know that there's going to be a very strong educational component about the legalization. And as, as council is quite aware, Your Honor, Your Worship, that the, the Senate is, is debating it, and legalization may not be until 2019. So the question that is on the floor right now is one for council to make. It really comes down to whether retail, cannabis retail should be allowed in the city of Waverne. So I guess if there's any direct questions, I can definitely take them.
Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Van Betje.
Thank you, Chief. Would there be any advantage to maybe having just one operation initially as opposed to two until we have a better feel for the whole cannabis thing?
I, you know what, I don't have an answer for that. I, I think economics will probably drive, drive it stronger than whether council picks one or two. It'll depend on what the market is, whether the city of Waverne and the market of purchasing will, can support two stores, or three stores, or four stores. But I mean, right now, the, the province is restricting each community to, to community to a certain number. That's going to be regulated through the SAS Liquor and Gaming. But to say one is better than two, I, I don't have the information. I'm sorry, Mal.
So it's not really an enforcement? It won't be an enforcement issue from your point of view, whether there's one, two, or...
No, because, because again, the regulatory body will be SLGA, where it becomes kind of a gray area, or at least at this point in time, it's a gray area, is if, and I'll use an example, if they sell edibles. Right now, that's illegal. So should they be legally able to sell cannabis, but they're selling edibles? In my understanding, depending on what the law looks like, that would be trafficking. So that would now become a policing issue. I'm sure there will be other areas which will come across the desk of police, but I don't know what they, what they'll be exactly, so.
Thanks, Your Worship, Chief. Thanks for coming, and I can appreciate what this must be like for you with all of the unknowns that are happening around it, and everybody's throwing questions at you. But I want to just clarify for myself, some of the stuff that Councilor Van Betje was asking, and I think I understand it, would it be similar when you say that enforcement really isn't the role of, of the Waverne Police Service? It more, I shouldn't say enforcement, but let me rephrase that. The regulation of the retail outlet falls more on the shoulders of SLGA, the Saskatchewan Liquor and Gaming Authority, than it would on the police service, much like a liquor store? The, the regulation of that retail outlet falls more on them?
That is the information that I've been given to this date. I mean, again, it hasn't passed, but as I understand, SLGA will be the lic, the licensing regulatory body that will look after products, irregular, regulatory, sorry, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yes, sir.
I'll find that word later. But, but yes, they'll be doing that. But there'll, there'll still be areas where police will be involved. And, and again, the biggest focus around public safety is, of course, the impaired driving and impaired by drugs. And there's, that's a whole other question that, that isn't out the table at this point in time.
Thanks, but again, that's, that's a separate issue from the retail outlet. Whether we have zero or seven retail outlets, once cannabis is legalized, you're going to be faced with that added, I don't know what the word is, responsibility of policing it regardless of how many outlets we've got.
That's correct. And whether we have none.
Right.
Because it's going to be legal in the province, so whether they purchase the product here or they go to Regina or Estevan or some other community that has it, if, if they want it, they can purchase it. It's legal.
Thank you.
Mr. Mikkel.
Thank you, Worship. I'd like to speak to the motion.
Sorry?
There's been, always been a lot of controversy and talk about the legalization of cannabis.
Just before this, Dick, did you have any questions for Mr. Pritchard?
No.
Okay, and just, just hold.
Okay.
Just hold a second, please.
Sorry.
Because I just do, get him off the floor. I guess the reg, the last thing, Chief Pritchard, to talk, and although it's about this, we're talking about the outlets, it also comes down to, would you not agree that as we move forward, whether we have outlets here or not, we still have to instruct bylaws that are going to match, to fit in, to work in the city? And the one comment that I would like to see whether I am correct in my way of thinking on your interpretation or not, that we can't be setting up different bylaws that are totally unenforceable. As in, like the idea that, the idea that we have only, you know, the province is going to say restricted to four plants per household, which to me is a totally unenforceable bylaw. Who's going to go around and start looking in every backyard every other day whether or not, how many plants are being grown? And as an entire, it said, they can only be six feet tall. Are we taking, take measures out to measure how tall?
As the Canadian Association Chiefs of Police have taken a position on that exact, it's, it's, it's in the federal legislation, as I understand, that home grows of up to four plants will be allowed. There, as I understand, there are at least one province that has chosen not to accept that, which is, may result in a jurisdictional discussion. But, but the CACP across the board have said that the, that law is, is very unenforceable. I mean, and they have removed the height restriction. Now it's just four plants. But, but again, we don't know what that regime would look like. Is five plants a ticketing offense, or is it a criminal offense? Is, so there's a lot of unknowns. Until we see what the provincial legislation is finally around that, I really can't answer that other than it is going to be very difficult, if not impossible, to enforce from a policing perspective.
And, and that brings it back to this whole question about retail outlets or not. Whether we have retail outlets or not, people are still going to be allowed to grow four plants in their backyard. So, I mean, there becomes this idea, retail outlets or grow your own marijuana. It becomes, they've, they've legalized it all the way through. Correct?
Well, as I understand it, that's going to be legalized at some point in time. There's, that's still, you know, is that Senate right now? Could there be some substantive changes to, to, to the legislation? Absolutely.
But I'm just saying, if they have, as it stands, you can either grow it and reg, or buy it from, so that.
Absolutely. I mean, right now, the regime, how it's been put out, and, and how other provinces have adapted their cannabis acts, or whatever it looks like, is that it will be legal to purchase it from, from retail stores, whether it's private or public. There's different models across the country, and, and, and a lot of the provinces are allowing the home grows of four, so, four plants. So yes, it's, it's going to be legal. It's going to be a product that is accessible to everyone.
Okay. Any other questions? At that point in time, we thank you for your comments and your input.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Mikkel, you're on the floor now.
Thank you, Worship. To the motion on the floor, Your Worship? There's always been a lot of controversy, Your Worship, about the legalization of cannabis, cannabis, marijuana. And while I don't fully agree with the decision to legalize it, I do understand it is happening. I think it would be unwise not to allow the sale of cannabis in, in Waverne, because it would only prolong the, the evinable, and sooner we deal with the issue is the better. Legalization is happening, and as such, we have to act accordingly. We need to let people know that a lot of issues will be dealt with by the provincial government, SAS's age limit, et cetera. It is the planning and policing of these items that will fall to the city of Waverne, and I know that once the province has made its decision, the city of Waverne will be able to formulate its action plan. Your Worship, I'll, we will be voting against the motion.
We have our other guests. Do you wish to speak? No?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. So then we'll just kind of go around the table here. Okay, Mr. Bailey? Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Your Worship. And you'll see, I made some notes, as Councilor Mikkel did, because I don't want to stray too far. A lot of the things that I've written down here have been already addressed and some questions. I'm not, I'm like you, Councilor Mikkel, I do oppose the legalization of it, but I am aware that it's coming. But I think there's so many questions here, so if you wish, Worship, I'd just like to read this where I can not be dragging this on. Before we say yes to the largest change in our society, in my lifetime anyway, we don't know the effects of what this will have on our community in several different areas. Neither the federal or provincial, provincial government have not given us any guidelines to deal with the unknown issues that will arise. Some of the effects in our community are who and who can and where can this be used in public, and we will address that. Who must, how much is permissible? What are the laws for policing under the... What are the laws for policing under the impact, impairment, and how do they detect it? Do we know the social effect on our youth, maybe? And where's the money for the physical and mental issues that will arise from this legislation? If the rumors of what is proposed out there, of grow-ups being in your yard or in your home, up to three plants an adult, and I think we have a little number difference there, of a home, in my line of work, what is the value of your home going to be if your two neighbors on your side have these grow-up operations? In my line of work, that's a very, very important question, and we haven't addressed that. I'm not sure if all these questions can be answered by council, but before we give in to the demands put on, put upon our city, I would like to request that we bring this to an open forum, to the public to discuss with us, and on the community perception of what we are probably going to be faced with. And let them give us direction on whether or not we have one, two, or no retail marijuana outlets in the city of Weyburn. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Richards?
Thanks, your worship. I can appreciate councillor Bailey, where you're coming from on this, and I truly, truly do have mixed emotions on, on this as well. However, a lot of what you brought up there is going to happen, whether we have one, two, or no retail outlets here. Whether we allow a retail outlet or not, your, your neighbor's still going to be able to do what he does in his backyard. And my fear, and if I can just, if you entertain my memory a bit, your worship, back when I was in the bar business, a few years back, more than a few years back, we had a very similar debate about video lottery terminals. You can remember in the early 90s, when we were going to get video lottery terminals, and the SLGA said, "We're going to do this," and a lot of folks said, "This will be the end." The end is near then, because folks are going to lose their homes, things are going to be hard, and as a community, we had to say, if we don't allow video lottery terminals in our community, our, our people that want to use those are just going to drive down the road and put money in somebody else's pocket. And someone who has, is going to have a negative impact on their life as a result of gambling is going to likely gamble, whether that's in Weyburn, or if it's 40 minutes either direction. Whether I agree with the legalization of marijuana or not, it's not for debate tonight. What I do believe, though, is, is keeping our economy strong. Marijuana is going to be on the streets whenever it's legalized, and I think the chief is right. I don't believe the federal government has a very good plan in place to get this out the door, and frankly, I'm not sure the provincial government has got the information they need to, to deal with it once it comes into their lap. I will not support this motion, councillor Bailey, not because I agree with the legalization of marijuana, but because I believe all of the negative impacts you're fearful of are going to be here, whether Weyburn has an outlet or not, and I don't want to send our people who want to buy it down the road.
Mr. Van Betje?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I, I also won't support the motion for many of the reasons that councillor Richards stated. Whether we have retail outlets or not, the person is still going to be able to grow his four plants on either side of the house. I don't agree with the federal government's decision to legalize marijuana. I also don't think the, our provincial government has set a fairly good, stable plan in place yet also. And I think maybe the time for public debate might come up in the future, when we start to discuss zoning, where the uses are allowed in the town. And I think that's probably where we have the most control over, and probably a larger benefit to have input from the community, so.
Your worship, I'll echo councillor Richards, and Van Betje, I will not be supporting the motion also. We're given the chance to be guaranteed two retail outlets in our store, and in today's economy, if we can get two retailers, that's a great thing. It, it's, it's happening, so whether they are going down the road, or they're buying online, I would prefer to see them buy at two of our retail locations. I feel our part as council will come down to the zoning aspect, and we'll build bylaws. That's, that's our duty, and let the province and the federal government figure out the complete regulations around it, so I will not be supporting it also.
I respect each one of your councillors' opinions. As I said in the first, my head isn't in the sand for far that I don't know that it's out there. Of course it is, and it's going to happen in our cities. I, I detest how it's being implemented at the federal level, whether we need it or not. I've been doing some reading on issues in Colorado, and of course, depending on what you're reading, you get two sides of the story, where it's, it's been extremely negative, and the other side is, oh, it's, it's okay. So, I, I appreciate your opinion, I know it's coming, but I just think, in my personal status on this, and my belief on it, that's why I put the motion forward, and like, I know where, what's going to happen, so I hope we can contain it in our societies, that we don't do the damage that could be done, especially to our young people. That's, it's, it's going to be so hard to police and so hard to control. Your, your analyzation of the lotteries, I remember that coming in. If people are going to find it, they're going to find it. So, thank you, your worship.
In the earlier discussions with our youth mayor here, replacement, that we had, he discussed that the, even the, this young people in this youth council hasn't really come to any unanimous thing within the whole system. I, I won't be supporting this motion either, Mr. Bailey, simply because the, the idea that you've got the access to four plants in your backyard, same thing as everything that this, that they discussed, we need the retails, whatever retail outlet is coming along. The other thing that I do agree with, though, is there should be a public forum when it comes to bylaws, as to how we're going to run this. And also, I would hope that our provincial government really figures out what is going to go on with where this marijuana can be smoked to, as if they say, retail, residence only, what about all the people that are traveling into the city for hockey games and whatever? So are they going to be infractions of the law, because they're outside the hotel? And there's going to be a lot to be discussed, but at the, for this one, this motion that we have here, I, won't be discussing.
Would you agree me, with me, your worship? This is probably one of the biggest things, though, in society we have seen in our lifetimes, as the potential of being such a change in how things are accepted and done.
I think, I think...
And maybe could be the biggest impact that we have.
I think there's a huge impact, but coming back to the days of my policing, the, one of the things that alcohol was, is, has a lot more negative effects, I believe, than what we ever saw with marijuana on that, although there's always that drug scene and that other things, and there's always the concept that there's, that leads to harder drugs. We still, alcohol has a huge, huge impact in our society, and a lot of detrimental things, and at this point, we're not prohibiting or going back into prohibition days for certain. So, at this point, we will have to see where, how it all rolls out, and what effect it actually has on us. Any other discussion at this time? All in favor of the motion? One in favor? And all against? And so, as it progresses then, there, it'll be, that we will have two retail outlets within the city of Weyburn.
Yes, your worship. I will contact SASC Liquor and Gaming tomorrow and tell them to proceed as usual, as we had already indicated, or we're already going to, anyway.
Going to.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for all the discussion, the people that were here tonight, and all the input. We move on to a development permit application for a mobile concession. Amanda Kaufman will speak to this.
We've had a request from Vern Carlson, owner of the mobile concession truck, One Guy and a Grill, to operate at various events at the exhibition grounds. As the exhibition grounds are owned by the city of Weyburn, they need to obtain city council approval to operate there. A map area has been provided to mobile concession requested, working at the exhibition grounds by our leisure services director of locations where they can park and where they can't park. It's not expected that there's any negative onsite or offsite effects from having mobile concessions operate there. Staff recommends that council approves the temporary placement of One Guy and a Grill mobile truck concession at various locations, including Tom Lang Park and the exhibition grounds, following, with the following conditions. Special circumstance contract get entered into between Minor Ball, Weyburn Eggs Society, and One Guy and a Grill. Approval from public health would be submitted, showing that the mobile truck concession meets the requirements of public eating establishment. Adequate refuse containers must be made available at all locations, and shall be kept clean at all times. Mobile food truck shall not be parked to obstruct pedestrian or vehicular traffic. Mobile concession truck may be parked in permitted areas as highlighted on the map, to ensure existing fire lanes remain unobstructed. Upon completion of the temporary use, the mobile food truck and all structures associated shall be removed. Any area devoted to required landscaping at the site shall not be occupied by any temporary mobile food trucks. The mobile concession truck is not permitted to park on any city-owned land, other than at the exhibition grounds or Tom Lang, without separate approval through development permit. And if the mobile concession is operating on any privately-owned land, the owner's permission shall be obtained prior to operation, and One Guy and a Grill shall obtain city Weyburn business license prior to operation.
Is there any questions? Can we have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion, the development permit application from One Guy and a Grill food truck to operate a mobile concession at various locations, including Tom Lang Park and the exhibition grounds, be approved, subject to the conditions provided.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Any other discussion?
Just a quick question.
One question?
Thanks, your worship. I wish I would have asked this question earlier, and I didn't, and I'm going to get a, I'm going to get a cross look, but the business license that they purchase, that a vendor purchases to come into the city, is priced differently than, than a business license it's purchased by a traditional storefront, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And what's that difference? Do you know off the top of your head, and if you don't, I understand.
Oh, $132 for guys that come into town, and guys that have a storefront, it's $50 annually.
So there's a premium?
Yeah.
To help offset some of the costs and things like that?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Nothing about the size of burgers, or?
Nope. Check them out.
You'll only check them out there. At this point in time, call the question? All in favor? Carry unanimously. We, we now move on to inquiries and announcements. Any council inquiries? Just, go ahead.
What you're probably going to say, your worship, I, okay, I'll let you do it.
No, no, you can do it.
I just, I want to thank everybody in Weyburn for handling that snow as well as we did, on our street too. Everybody was amazing, nobody complained, I got, I got my snow blower stuck, I got help with that, and I want a huge shout out to our City Works crew for, for all that work. That is unbelievable, and I'm still getting people talking about it. I have a friend that was in Moose Jaw on the weekend, he said, "Holy smokes, you got no idea how good we got it." So, thank you.
Mr. Mikkel?
In fact, there's one gentleman today that he said, "His street was so good, he thought the king and queen were coming." And, I'm, everything was positive.
The, now, I'll ask an inquiry yourself. Did you find anything about the, the consumption, water consumption at the... Get you to turn on your mic, there?
The water consumption during the previous five years has dollar numbers, because some of the periods...
This is at, this is at the, the supply station?
The standby.
Yeah.
It is, on average, $33,000 per year. Per year to this, it was 41 on average. So, we are referring, like, like, there is, during, I tried, as I discussed with, with you, that we can compare the consumption during January and February to January and February for last year. Unfortunately, like, the meters at the standby was malfunctioned during an extended period for January and February this year. So there is no actual consumption we have right now, except like, you know, the dollar values we have presented here. We don't think that there will be an issue for now, we will keep eye on this. Once spring comes, we will, we will install the fiber optic cable, and we'll start using a prepaid method for monitoring the consumption for the standby at our location.
Very good, thank you. So there's no real upsurge of, of usage here, that, that can be noticed at this time?
No, there is no upsurge.
Thank you. Any other inquiries? Mr. Van Betje?
No, and I just noticed in the report also, your worship, in regards to the, what we're charging at the standpipe compared to what a citizen is paying, that, you know, there is an upcharge to buying water at the standpipe. You know, it is an extra service and whatnot, so the citizens of Weyburn don't have to feel that we're giving the water away, that the people are paying a fair market value when they are coming into the city and purchasing water at the standpipe.
The other thing is, are we, there is no other, there's no standpipe above one of the car washes, is there? Where they can fill at one of the car washes?
No.
No? Okay. Go ahead. Can we, also, how is the culvert, the culvert replacement going? There's two culvert, because we had a notice here today that there's going to be some road closures, if you could talk about the road closures and the culvert?
So, it was scheduled for the culvert replacement, there is two culverts, one at the intersection of Government Road and Highway 39, and the other one at Third with Highway 39 as well, so it is one stretch, it will be closed tomorrow. It was scheduled for the, the previous week, unfortunately, due to the snowstorm post-vent, we figured out that the contractor could help in snow removal rather than doing the culvert replacement. We will start the construction tomorrow. There will be a, a detour sign posted on Highway 39. The traffic will be diverted through 16th and First Avenue, ongoing up to the intersection for 13 with 39. This was the discussion with the Ministry of Highways, and what we agreed upon. It is anticipated that we will have this on effect for approximately seven days, hopefully, like, it will work like this. That's all about it.
So effective tomorrow morning, about 8 o'clock?
Um, 9:30. We'll start 9:30.
Are we, your worship, are we doing the work ourselves, or is it contracted out?
Nick Tootscher, we voted on that.
All of that's right, too.
Sorry?
Any other inquiries? Very good. At this point in time, there's no notice of motion, no request for clarification, and no committee of the whole. With that, that brings the conclusion of the meeting. Thank you all that came here. Good luck, Matthew, and shouldn't say good luck, but welcome. That's the, that's the statement I mean. That's a wrong statement, good luck. You have our support, and we'll move forward from here. I call this meeting adjourned.